...career in technical education. We're seeking sealed bids for the sale of a CNC machine, TechnoISOL model E243 serial Let the record show that all board members except Mr. Bill Grove are present for the hearing. Mr. Finger, take it away.
Yes, the information on this piece of equipment, this is a surplus or piece of equipment that we no longer use for instruction, so it's going to be put up for sale. It is a computer-controlled cutting apparatus. I don't know if it's plasma or laser, to be honest, off the top of my head, but it is surplus, it's no longer being used, and we are going to sell it to the highest bidder.
Okay, are there any questions from Mr. Finger? Do we feel it will never be useful?
My understanding is that the curriculum has changed and there are no plans to use that piece of equipment going forward, and that's based on a recommendation from the principal at that facility. Dr. Vorthman, I'm guessing that that space has been repurposed. I know we've changed some programs down there.
Okay. It's a big machine. How old is it? Is it just kind of outdated, or?
That piece of equipment has been here as long as I've been in this job, which is 10 years, so it's at least 10 years or more older, for sure. My understanding is that now that it's been replaced by a, this is the plasma cutter, okay, the plasma cutter is new, replacing this particular old cutting device, hence the reason why it's being sold.
Okay. Outdated, sort of. Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? All right.
Curious.
Yes.
We anticipate that it will sell for over $5,000, so that's why the public hearing is existing. I don't know the original cost of one of these. I knew, I know that the new plasma cutter was over $50,000, so...
Do we have a minimum we want to get out of this, or we won't sell it?
We're here because we believe that it'll be over $5,000.
Kyle Forni is the one basically working on getting this for sale. I have not asked him if he has a minimum reserve on it, but we can certainly look at that and report back. It just depends what the market is for something that, you know, that old.
Well, we're saying we've already posted, this is, or this is the posting for it to be viewing, starting for two weeks, TJ.
Correct.
Okay. So I assume we could accept a bid if we don't think it's...
Yeah, you have the discretion of accepting a bid or not accepting a bid.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about the Council of State School District's request for sealed bids for the sale of this machine? And seeing none, thank you very much for your attendance during these public hearings. I am now closing the public hearing session. That's three taps. I'm now opening the regular work meeting for October 10, 2017, for the Council of State School District. Is there a meeting button?
Join.
The join button?
You want to make it live?
I have made it live.
Mm-hmm. Sorry. I will, we need to.
There's always about a three-second delay on this.
Three seconds. People are watching, we are trying to use technology. Can I go to meetings?
Join meeting.
I didn't ref, oh, I didn't refresh mine.
If you go to, if you go to meetings or...
Ah, join the meeting.
Then you'll, exactly, you'll see the join meeting.
Looks just like the other one did. Okay. So if you go back, select it again, then hit join the meeting, except for yours, which is not connected to the internet.
And you will...
Okay. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Augustus.
Present.
John, Mr. Minchell.
Present.
Mr. Arthur.
I'm present.
Mr. Gazire.
Present.
Mr. LaFurla.
Present.
Mr. McGlade.
Present.
Excellent. If you'd please join me for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Now we have approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda as presented.
Excellent, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, comments, concerns? No. Mr. Wilson, somehow you will call the roll. Actually, no, I will call a roll. There's no, we're just all in favor.
Just all in favor.
There's not a button, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the agenda's approved. Now we have approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of October, of September 26th, and the organizational meeting of September 26th, 2017. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the meeting minutes for the work session of September 26th, the regular meeting of September 26th, and the organizational meeting of September 26th, 2017.
Thank you, Chris LaFurla. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Is there any discussion on these meeting minutes, corrections? No, there's not. All in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the minutes are carried. Now we come to the public participation portion of our meeting, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any matters coming up before the board today or other matters you may have. Is there anyone who would like to talk? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Now we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Marillo.
Thank you, and good evening. At this time, we're going to have our student achievement report, and Dr. Vorthman is going to present first on our school, our comprehensive school improvement plan. And, Dr. Vorthman, the floor is yours.
Good evening. My pleasure tonight to bring to you an update regarding the school district's comprehensive school improvement plan submitted to the State Department of Education. We do this annually as an opportunity to provide the state an update on the path that we're headed and the goals that we've set for the upcoming school year. So I want to share with you tonight kind of a roadmap for my presentation, first starting with the purpose of why we engage in a school, comprehensive school improvement plan process, how that plan is aligned to other things that are going on in the school district, what the focus of that comprehensive school improvement plan entails, what targets we set for student achievement, and then the action steps that we will take to obtain them. First tonight, I wanted to start with a quote from our friends at the Iowa Department of Education, who, Amy Williamson, the bureau chief, helped us understand that really the comprehensive school improvement plan is an opportunity to chart the course, or at least for the opportunity for the school district to have a conversation around where they're headed, to set goals that are attainable and measurable, and most importantly, focus on continuous improvement, continuing every year to set goals and get better. And of course, this is all linked on our most important outcome, which is student learning. So this work is not done in isolation, it's aligned with several of the things that you're very familiar with, that we talk about during the school year, but first of all, it's aligned with our strategic plan, which outlines seven big items that we are working on and have been working on for the past several years. It's also aligned to the building school improvement plans, which you heard about this evening in your conversations with our building principals. You're also going to hear tonight about the superintendent's post-100-day plan, and our comprehensive school improvement plan is also aligned with those initiatives as well. And then lastly, it is aligned with the 1720 academic plan, which you will see in the upcoming weeks. The focus of the comprehensive school improvement plan is very prescriptive, as per the Department of Education. If you recall, several years ago, the legislature made a serious push to increase third-grade reading, and as a result of that legislation came a mandate, which was subsequently rescinded, for retention at third grade, but the focus and the resource still remains on increasing proficiency rates in early childhood reading. And so that's what the comprehensive school improvement plan focuses on. The State Department asks us to set goals around early literacy. So our targets are pretty straightforward. We have a short-range target for the upcoming 2017-18 school year, and our goal is to get 63% of our students at or above proficiency by the end of the school year. And that's a 4% increase over the previous school year. Last year, we were 59% proficient, and the year before that, we were 55% proficient. So we have a proven track record that we can make 4% growth every year, and it is our intention to do that again this year. In the long range, we intend to be at 71% proficient by 2020. This will get us even closer to that magic 80% that I talked about last year, where we believe that we have strong evidence that our instructional core is sufficient for all kids. Until we get to that 80%, we have work to do in the instructional core. We've outlined a few action steps that we've reported to the Department of Ed, and you heard much greater detail tonight in your building school improvement plan updates, but we believe several key action steps are going to help us reach that 63 and ultimately 71% in three years. First of all, we have to do a better job of continuing to implement with fidelity our multi-tiered system of supports, and that is where we provide screening for all students in literacy, to make sure that we cast a wide net, though we don't let anybody drop through the net who needs additional support. We identify those kids who are struggling, we intervene with them, providing diagnostic instruction that meets their individual reading needs, we monitor their progress, and then we repeat the process. Secondly, as I stated a minute ago, we have to strengthen our core instruction for all students. And by, what I mean by core instruction is the instruction that all students receive in the regular classroom setting. It has to improve to meet at least the needs of 80% to be sufficient. Third, we will provide class-wide intervention in any classrooms where fewer than 60% of our kids are proficient, and that is an opportunity for us to supplement the core instruction with a specific intervention to bridge the gap between where kids are and where we need them to be in core instruction. And then lastly, we'll continue to extend support for early learning with our summer reading program to bridge the gap between the end of the school year and the beginning of the school year, focusing intensely on students who are below grade level in reading. So this comprehensive school improvement plan really has a purpose that's driven by continuous improvement. We keep this plan aligned to the other things that we're currently doing in the school district so that we can keep our focus on early literacy. Our targets are simple but attainable. They are 63% proficiency by the end of this academic year and 71% proficient by 2020, and we have four big action steps that we will take in concert with our building principals to make sure that this goal is obtained by the end of the school year. Be happy to answer any of your questions at this time.
Any questions from the board?
So the state only requires that we have a goal around early literacy, that we have a plan around early literacy. Do they dictate that we use the FAST assessment, or the district chooses that assessment?
We have to use a, an assessment that is approved by the Department of Education from that list. Right now, FAST is the only one on the list that the state pays for. Otherwise, it's an unfunded mandate.
What would class-wide interventions look like?
Excellent question. So let me give you, let me give you an example. So if for, if a classroom has fewer than 60% of their kids proficient, and they may be, they may have identified that kids need additional work in fluency, or accuracy, or rate, or phrasing, which are all components of fluency, they may have very specific repeated lessons that are right around that specific skill deficit at the same, while they're in their regular classroom setting, and every child gets it. So they may be learning about the main idea in their core instruction, which is the big block of their literacy instruction, but all of our elementary schools have carved out a section of time for classrooms that need additional support and class-wide intervention so that it doesn't happen to the detriment of core instruction, it's in addition to. So it's not, it's not an opportunity where kids are leaving the classroom or they're getting pulled out of core instruction to receive the additional. It is truly a blanketed approach. It's a more.
What happens to the classrooms that don't need that? What do they do with that?
Then they don't have it, it's not even in their schedule. So only classrooms that need class-wide intervention have it built into their schedule, otherwise they're using that in core instruction.
And is that all you, if that's built in?
It's built in until they don't need it any longer. So we have three screening periods. We're just finishing, getting ready to finish up the first fall screening period, then we have a winter screening period after we come back from winter break, and then there's a spring screening period that happens in the first week of May.
Is the winter break score usually the lowest because they've been gone?
It's usually the fall that's the lowest.
Because they've been in summer, gone.
So do we feel that, do we have a gauge right now where we think that number's going to land, the number of classes that we'll need, class-wide intervention?
A guess?
Just educated guess, or no? Are we curious to see where it'll be?
I would say that I could tell you probably on two hands, the number of classrooms that would not need class-wide intervention in K3.
Okay. Okay. Do we feel that those, in those classes where we have kids who maybe are proficient, doing well, will this just be another tool in their cap or belt or so? Okay.
The thing about it is extra practice. So for proficient readers, class-wide intervention is not a bad thing for them either. And that was kind of, we pushed back on that a little bit when we visited with some of our partners at the State Department about why should kids who are already proficient engage in class-wide intervention? And they were very adamant. If you like a sports analogy, why does a batter who currently hits 400 take batting practice?
Does he still need to practice?
Still need to practice. So the more fluent we get, the less, the less, the less energy our brains need to comprehend, the easier it is for us to comprehend. So that's why fluency is so important, and kids have to get automatic, they have to have a high enough rate in processing written, print, for them to be able to comprehend at deep levels, because as text gets harder and harder, and more complex and more complex, we need to use more of our brain to comprehend and less of it to decode. That's why it's so important.
So then, should we, if that batter needs to keep practicing, should we just have every class go through it?
No. We shouldn't, because if, at least, if we have at least 60%, we know that our core instruction is probably doing a good enough job with that practice.
Okay.
It's like taking the extra batting practice instead of the regular batting practice.
That was, that was my question regarding, is there the ability to differentiate the instruction for those students who have, have met the proficiency or, and your answer is yes, that instruction is differentiated?
We would expect that core instruction to look different for those kids. Class-wide intervention is where we look at what does this class as a whole need that's holding them back.
Any other questions from the board?
Just the number that you initially came up with, that's based upon last year's...
Yeah, so we looked at trend data to try to identify where we could set a goal that was a big enough stretch that it would challenge us, but that was attainable.
And 80% is your ultimate goal?
We would, we would love to, we would like to get to 100%, but I would feel a lot better about the quality of core instruction that every kid has if we could get to 80%. That would say that we have curriculum in the right place, we have instructional time in the right place, materials are in the right place, we have assessment for learning in the right place, and we have good instructional practice in the right place.
And when you say 80%, you mean 80% proficient, proficient based on the FAST assessment?
Correct. Yep. So when we cast a net, there are only 20% of our kids who need something beyond what they're getting in the classroom.
And how aligned is the FAST with the assessments?
The FAST is the assessment, and the nice thing about the FAST is it's measuring fluency, which we know is one of the best predictors of whether or not kids are going to be successful readers as they progress through the grade levels. So that's why that, that's why we're so focused on K3 literacy and fluency right now, is to make sure that kids have those skills so that as they move through the grades, they have more ability to comprehend those texts at deeper levels.
On a, on a annual basis, do we have any idea how much more time is spent then, or will be spending in this intervention? Just curious. Just like to say, you know, this is...
Like how many minutes are spent in class-wide intervention?
Thousands more hours of just dedicated time, just curious.
Julie, do you know? Class-wide?
Class-wide is usually about 12 to 15 minutes.
Per day?
Okay. Times...
Which is a lot of time for a kindergartner to stay focused.
Times, what, 50, 60 classrooms, 70 classrooms? That's a lot of time. I guess I'd like to see us make sure we promote that, too, because I think this is a dedication of, I mean, where we were moving, but it means certainly a commitment to fluency that we haven't had in the past, so I applaud you guys for that.
And foundational reading skills, absolutely.
Yeah, that's excellent.
My one question would be, how has the repeal of the retention policy, not policy, but law, affected our timetable? Have we adjusted that since we're not under such critical timeframe? Has that pushed us back, or, you know, give us, give us a time to kind of sigh and be a little more reflective on what has been working best in the classrooms, or has that timetable been, how has it been affected?
Good question. I think we have taken the approach that we're going to do the right thing for kids, regardless of a third-grade retention mandate or not. As you know, we have been pushing for summer reading programming for many years with the help of Iowa West Foundation, and we'll continue that because we think it's good for kids. We disagreed with the third-grade reading mandate for many reasons, based on research, based on practice, based on feedback, but it doesn't stop our commitment to making sure that all kids have a high-quality core in their classroom, and that we make sure that all kids can read on grade level by third grade. That commitment stays in place no matter what the legislature decides.
From what I understand about the FAST, it's more of sort of like a check-in point that you use throughout the year to see, okay, well, where is this student? But does it give teachers information they need to improve instruction in the classroom?
It is simply a screen. All, all the FAST assessment does is it says, of your universe of kids, which of them need additional support? And then we have other instruments that help us determine where we need to diagnose. And one of the things Dr. Marillo is going to share with you tonight is a gap in our system that we plan to fill with being much more strategic about how we're identifying where those gaps lie and how we can use the data to close those gaps instructionally. I'm not going to steal her thunder.
Go ahead.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vorthman. Vorthman, at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Julie Smith to come up, and she's going to kind of put the bow on and wrap up our school improvement plans.
Trying to cast a lock at the same time. You got this, girl. So, well, good evening.
Good evening.
I hope you enjoyed your time visiting with principals about their school improvement plans earlier this, earlier this evening in the work session. I'm pleased to be here tonight, as Dr. Marillo said, to kind of, kind of wrap it all together for you and highlight our work around school improvement process and kind of provide a context for some of the things that you heard earlier tonight. So why do we have a school improvement process? Basically, we want to be able to guide buildings in using evidence, analysis, and action to improve learning for all students. We use it as a vehicle to support the district goals that Dr. Vorthman talked about a little bit ago, and we also use it as, is to, is to provide a system-wide support to buildings so that we can help them implement and achieve the goals that they are looking at. First things, I'm going to talk about all three of these a little bit in depth, and the first one I'm going to talk about is evidence. We, I'm specifically using the word evidence here. I think a lot of times you might hear data, use that as the same way. But when we're looking at evidence, a lot of times you'll hear people say, well, I think it's like this, or I really think things are going well. And what we are asking for is evidence. How do you know things are going well? The first questions in our data consult, which starts off our school improvement process, begins with how healthy is your culture, and how do you know, followed by how healthy is your universal instruction, and how do you know? And so those are the two big things buildings have to answer as part of their school improvement process. So we ask them to look at some things. For example, evidence around culture could be suspension rates, the Veas bullying questionnaire, the HumanX survey data that comes back, attendance patterns that happen in a building are all indicators of how healthy a culture might be in a building. With universal instruction, we would look at district assessments, evidence of Iowa assessments and how they're doing, the FAST, you just heard Dr. Vorthman talk a lot about the FAST and how we use that, scholastic reading inventory, which is given three times a year, the ACT, all of those things give an indication of how healthy is your universal instruction. Evidence is monitored throughout our whole process. One of the types of, one of the things we looked at is what we'd call impact data, impact evidence, and that's really around student data, and those, you may have heard the principals talk about what they're using along the way to say, is our plan working? Many of them will use FAST data throughout the year to say, are our kids becoming more fluent readers? And so some of those are ongoing measures to look at. We also look at implementation data, because also involved in our plans, we expect change and expect things to happen, and how are things being implemented? And principals monitor, are the things we're asking people to do to become better, are they being implemented in the classroom? So those are the types of evidence that we look for in part of our process. The next thing we ask people to do is analysis, analyze. This is behind the scenes. You have not, you would not have seen this in any of the documents that you were given, but this is how they're going to get to the next step. So when we ask buildings to analyze, it's really a collaborative effort with teachers, building leaders, principals, to really go in and diagnose the current state of their building, or the reality of their building. So we want them to look at, where are your strengths, what are your needs, what are your student growth patterns? How do things look longitudinally? Do you have evidence that shows things are getting better over time? Do you have evidence that shows your cohorts, so kids are growing from first grade to second grade to third grade? So we're asking those teams to really analyze that. We also ask them to analyze what we call our building blocks. Do you have enough, enough instructional time in your day if you're struggling in some areas? Do you have the right materials? Do your teachers understand curriculum and the standards? Do they have good instructional practices that go along with that? Do they have, do they collaborate on a regular basis? Are they using assessment well on a daily basis? So we're looking at all those areas with, that we also ask them to analyze as they're going through, and that's ongoing. They'll do some of it at the end of each trimester when they have their summit of assessments going on. Teams of teachers analyze weekly during PLCs, daily as they're looking at their own data in the classroom, all connected to these things as they're going. So analysis is huge, and it's ongoing. And the last piece is action. Action, again, you would have heard some of these things directly in that plan that they may have talked about today. they may have talked about today. So we ask them, you know, so it's, it's great, we have lots of things to look at, we've looked at them deeply, but we have to do something about them in order for learning to improve. And so again, you'll find these directly related, the goals, they will all write goals around culture, how do we improve our culture? They will write goals around how do we improve our student achievement? Then they will look at strategies about that, going back to their analysis and saying, if we know that this is not where we need to be, what strategy can we use? Is this, is this an instructional strategy we need to get going? Do we need to look at our time? How are we going to change? They'll develop a strategy around the improvement around that, and then they have their action steps that they're going to take. The action steps probably look the most lengthy in the school improvement plan, and they weren't included in your one-pager, but you have the documents of all the plans, and you'll see that's the lengthy part. It looks like a lot of action steps, but that really requires them to think deeply about, how am I getting from A to Z? And so that's part of the plan that we use. We also take action around teacher development, and based on their analysis of what's going on, they write professional development plans about how are we going to help teachers have the skills and strategies they need in order to successfully implement what we're asking them to implement. So short and sweet, any questions about our process that I can answer for you?
Any board members have questions?
I appreciate having the time with the principals. That's very valuable and-
They appreciate it as well, thank you.
Well, good. I'm just curious to know when they start working on these plans and when they start, when they're done, and then when they start implementing those in the course of the year.
Very nice question. In the spring of the year, May-ish, we have them come in for their data consult. And so that is really, it's the start and the end, because it starts with where, how they're looking at their data and analyzing their data, and they end with looking at their data and analyzing their data and then making that step. So it's always a cyclical process. They generally work with their teams in the spring, early summer, to get the, like, the bones of their plan done, you know? And then, and Bill, and then principals will oftentimes work through the summer without to really refine some of those things going, so it's ready to implement when school starts in August.
Did, did the school district develop this framework for these plans, or is that adapted from somewhere?
We were on version about 2.5 of our plans with looking at this. We had a very different version, or a slight, somewhat different version two years ago, and really found that we were spending too much time on looking at data and not enough time on analysis and action. And so we changed some of our questions to principals about how, how can, you know, what do you really need to think about to move what's going forward in doing that? So we have revised, two years ago, a fairly good revision, and then last year, a few tweaks.
I really appreciate that we have a cult, a whole goal or set of goals around culture. I think at our tables, the tables that I was at anyway, we spent a lot, seemed like we spent a lot more time really talking about those goals than the academic goals. And I could see why, because, you know, if the culture is suffering, I don't think you really ever have a chance to achieve your academic goals. If you have disengaged and dissatisfied teachers, you're going to have disengaged and dissatisfied students who don't come to class, and even when they're there, they don't really want to learn. So I really appreciate that we do that.
I think it was three years ago, the administrative team studied a lot about culture, and culture used to always be our kind of eh, goal down below. And then when we really started studying to see what an impact that had on things, that's why it's our first question, how healthy is your culture is our very first question, because so much else cannot happen if, if you're in an unhealthy culture and if things aren't working well in your building.
Since you talked about analysis of the data as one of the key, one of the critical points, what, what are we doing, what are, you know, what, what is the district doing to improve that diagnostic capability of, of our staff? Are they receiving additional training or continuing education on being able to discern that, come up with new diagnostic techniques or?
I think that's, yeah, I think that's really something that we have been growing at, and one of the things that we provide, if I, as you called it on the very first ones, one of the reasons we have a process is so that we can support the buildings. And so really diagnosing and trying to get deeper in the data and looking at data, for example, I would say, three years ago, when we would talk about data with principals, we didn't get into subgroup data. And then we said, you know what, we need to change this and do this. So our conversations with principals, when we go out and coach them, as, and we have a, our data consult really is bringing them in and doing that, having them explain their analysis and having us have an opportunity to ask questions that perhaps they aren't analyzing in a certain way and have them go back and think about. You know, an example that we, you know, like, that kind, that came up quite a bit this year was around suspension and referral data. And it's like, well, it's great that you're looking at referral data, but are you looking at where the referrals are coming from? You know, how, what are you really looking at about data? So getting more diagnostics, so you can start putting efforts towards what really might be the root of the cause and getting more to that. And so we really have been, over the past two years especially, really working on that diagnostic piece, not just looking at it and saying, there it is, but getting it to go, what's the root cause here? How, what do we really need to change to make a difference?
Well, you, you bring up a great point, because one of the principals had indicated, you know, there, a student, just an example, a student acted up one day, you know, and so the, the principal went in to, to talk with that student and, and she said, you know, you're not, you know, this is not your typical behavior. What, you know, why did you slam your book down? You know, it comes out, come to find that the student's hungry. I mean, it's just that, that time of the day, and they're, they just needed something, needed something to eat. So I mean, when we're looking at, well, what's the problem? Is it a behavioral problem? No, we need to feed the kid. It's not necessarily a behavioral problem, it's just we, the students' needs were not being met at that, at that point.
And so like, a strategy we might use to say is the five whys. Well, you know, why, why did you slam that? Well, because, well, why, and then even going deeper, well, why weren't you able to eat? How can we fix this problem for you? And getting deep in that analysis to really diagnose is very important. You're absolutely right.
I just want to say thank you again. This has been a very valuable experience, just being able to visit with all of the principals. I wished I had more time with them, but I know their time is very valuable.
We are happy to do that.
The principals are watching to see if things are being implemented, you had mentioned, in respect to not just following along with their strategic plan, but also making sure that everything else is being analyzed. Are we also analyzing if it's meaningful? Like, the money that we're spending on certain cost analysis or testing that we're doing, are we analyzing if it's meaningful information, all of the tests that we give or all of the things that are administered? From a teaching perspective, that feedback, like for the FAST example, mentioned that it's just kind of a screening tool. Is that meaningful to them? Is that helpful to them? And granted, that is paid for, but the other things that we're doing that cost, is that something that we look at also to see?
It is, and that is one of the things that, you know, we've made adjustments to our district-wide plans for assessment to go back and say, what is making sense and what really is meaningful and what do we need versus what might a teacher need in the classroom to teach on a day-to-day basis? We do know that different assessments, assessments serve different purposes, and again, Dr. Vorthman mentioned the FAST, its purpose is a screener to help us look building-wide. Are we, are we catching the kids that we need to catch? It doesn't give a much more information for that, which might not be very helpful for a teacher at first glance, but that identification of who you have to look for next is extremely helpful. And we're able to much more see a broad picture, and then we can go into more diagnosis of why? Why are they not fluent? Is this a vocabulary issue? Is it, I mean, it, there's so many things that go into fluency, then we dig in. Without that first blush, you're kind of shooting blind for the first time. So it serves a specific purpose, much different than other assessment purposes are, but to answer your question, yes, we do look at that. We analyze, like, yearly to do that, and we are finding holes in some of what we need. And again, I'm, Dr. Merillo is going to be talking about that in a little bit.
Do you have something?
Yeah.
Jump in.
All right. So basically, I see that we, obviously, we have the evidence, analysis, and action. Is there any way that we're actually, as the board, going to see the actual follow-up of culture and all these different strategic plans that all the different principals presented to us? How will we just see how that goes forward?
You will. It kind of goes on that yearly cycle. And so what, what you should see as you speak with the principals next year, if you were having the same ones or asking, or even asking that question, is where were you last year from here? Because this is just a continuous cycle, again, the data consult's kind of the start and the end of it, and what they share with you were their reasons why they went into going and doing that. Many of our plans are two- and three-year plans to see how they're getting closer to their goals with that, so that's really kind of how that's shared back.
And are they, they still updating the data wall in the conference room? Are they doing that anymore?
We are going to be updating, we're going to have a new look in there about really kind of a little bit more responsive to, to the action piece of it, not just, what you saw there was just evidence. You saw lots of evidence there, you saw no analysis, and you saw no action. And so we're going to try to move that over into, so you can see in a very easy way to go in and see, here was the evidence in our analysis, and now here's our action. And, and that's going to be updated ongoing by principals, because guess what? They're looking at this evidence all the time. It's ongoing, ongoing, and they're looking to see their impact, and they need to make new action as, or they need to say what their action is next as a result. So we're, you're going to see a new look in there.
And all that data is aligned with their school improvement plans?
I have a question on the, inside the school improvement plans. I noticed there was a benchmark around bullying prevention, and it was like a survey, so it's percentage bullying. Is that, are those number, the percentages, is that once per?
What generally tends to happen with that, we have some, it's called the OBQ for short, the Ovea's Bullying Questionnaire, and it is done once a year. What principals will do is they'll take questions from that that may, they may have seen an area where it could be like teachers don't, students don't feel teachers are responding to bullying. So that might be an area that they go in and they're going to make action around. So they'll use that question, and they will survey kids in that question multiple times in the year to see if it's getting better, because we don't want to give the survey more than once, but we'll take maybe a question or two from there, and they'll give that to, maybe two, maybe three times a year to say, are we moving that needle? From what we're doing, are kids now perceiving that teachers are stepping in?
Okay. Just the, like, the number to me is dramatic, even lessening it to fifteen percent would, that's, I'm curious what that question's all about, because it's, if you're saying that the benchmark is that fifteen percent of kids are feeling like they're bullied, that would seem incredibly high to me, as far as a goal. Like, I'd much rather have that be a very low number than, I get reality, and maybe that's, I felt bullied during the trimester at one time. But if those are, if that's like an ongoing reflection of some person's percent being bullied, these kind of worry me a little bit.
The, I think the, I would agree that that number would be alarming and looking at doing, but it's also, as you're trying to dig down into the root cause of that. Why do, why do they feel that they are being bullied that often? Is it that, it could be a lot of things. Do kids really understand what bullying means versus a disagreement with somebody? Do kids, for whatever reason, that's why diagnosing, diagnosing to find out, to get to a root cause, and then taking action on that, you should start to see a decrease. If, if, if part of that is educating kids, again, big F, if part of that is educating kids around what is bullying, what isn't bullying, and how do you get help with bullying, that perception might drop down very quickly. If it is that you've got several founded things in your building about bullying, that might be a, that's a different level or a different approach you would need to take. So the initial numbers, although they might sound very high, if we don't diagnose, if we don't do the diagnostics to go down and find out, why is that number like that, and finding some more information about that, we won't hit our target on how to, how to move that to say, you know, we really, you know, we think it's this, and so we're going to do this, and then that should move it. That's what we would want to see in the improvement plan, so.
But if I get a number come back at, like this particular one I'm looking at, it's a small school, has twenty-two and a half first try, twenty in the second try, and fifteen in the last. If they come back and they get a fourteen in the first trimester, do they go, oh, we don't have to put as much focus towards that?
No, I-
Or they continue to dive into it?
The, the, the benchmarks along the way that you see are really a guide to say, are we on the right track? And that's what we would look at. So it would help us to see, if we're thinking we're here and we want to be here at the end of the year, if we're here, would that tell us we're on track or not? But if we're up here, we're not on track. We've got to do something different than we're currently doing. We've got to intensify, we've got to maybe relook at this, maybe we're not hitting the right thing. But if we're, if we're going down, and here was our benchmark, and we're down here, we probably did some really good things, and we might be able to even look at something different. So that's just that guideline along the way to say, do we think we're going to be where we want to be at the end of the year? Previously, in our old model, we didn't look till the end of the year. So it didn't do a lot of good for us to, you know, by then, it's, it's like, well, oh, gosh.
Right.
We thought it was going well, but-
I got you, okay.
Any further questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, I'm going to switch gears and move over to the podium and present on the post one hundred days. Well, good evening. I have, I hope you have appreciated the relaxed time that we've had tonight with the workshop model, because we're not like rushing through to make sure we get through the resolutions and the consent items, and this kind of just gives us time to dig in. And so I really appreciate the work that the staff has done to put that together for us as we got together. At your tables, you have found a more detailed report, hopefully, and it's on the post-one-hundred-day plan. What I'm going to provide tonight is kind of like a twenty-five-thousand-foot view. I'm just going to come up and, and move a little higher for us, but it's really going to focus on what we learned during the first one hundred days and some of the action steps or the goals that we've set. It's been a good first one hundred days. I've enjoyed getting to know the staff, the community, the members and parents, community members and parents, and some here might not know what has happened during the first one hundred days, so I'm going to quickly go through that. We had some listening and learning, and I kind of tagged meeting sessions. And in that, we completed five listening and learning sessions, and we had about a hundred and fifty participants. We met with partners, community leaders, and fellow educational leaders. And then I also have toured a lot of buildings, and I'm going through second round now and meeting with students is what's beginning this week with what I call brown bag lunches. So I'll be meeting in every building with students and having lunch with them and just having a conversation. So I'm really looking forward to that time with the students now. So when we talk about the post-one-hundred-day plan, the purpose of this is to kind of guide our focus for the next three years. We'll continue to stay with the strategic plan, and you know, we have eight goals that we're focused on, and we have lead teams that are working on those eight goals. Some of the goals in the post-one-hundred-day align to that strategic plan, and I'll kind of tag those as we go through. We'll continue to have our comprehensive school improvement, and we'll continue to have our building-level school improvement plans. And again, seeing the alignment, but also pushing and stretching us to do some things that we heard from the community that they were looking for and that we also know our data is telling us that we need to do. So as we look at that, there is six goals. I was trying to keep it five or less, but I ended up with six. The first one is kind of an easy one, and it'll be a short-term goal, and that is the organizational alignment. And then we have the academic achievement, of course, career and technical ed, early college academy, which I'll introduce that to you, and the mental health supports. And then we'll kind of talk about mental health versus social and emotional or trauma-sensitive and what we're working on, because that's also one of our strategic goals, five-point-three. And then we also will end by looking at marketing and why I feel that's important. So as we begin to look at goal number one, really, we're talking about an organizational being effective and efficient. And there is some things, as I begin to review, that I've identified that is some changes that need to be made. I also have been examining current practices. I've been looking at policies. I've been looking at some areas that maybe we need to tighten up. I think last week I talked with our board president and our board vice president, and really talking about students using their personal vehicles during the day, and I set up an administrative policy to shore that up. So there are several areas that we'll publish some for the board, exactly what we're doing. And then I also want to streamline some areas and make sure we're more efficient in what we're doing. And, and all of this- And, and all of this, um, I am going to work with an outside consultant, um, that has worked with, uh, West Des Moines and some other districts. And, uh, he is going to, he has talked twice, conference call with Dean and I. And, um, we are going to really have him dig into our organization. I'm gonna have him look at how we are aligned. I believe there's some misalignments, uh, we have, uh, different people supervising areas that don't quite really flow and it's not, uh, set up incorrectly, but I want a fresh perspective. I want somebody from the outside to dig into our org charts. Um, every cabinet member has put together a one-pager for me that I sent to you all, uh, to review of the areas that they oversee. They're gonna dig into that. They're gonna compare us against some other districts that are alike, near peers, and begin to see how their organizational structure. I know that, um, there's been two previous audits that you've had, C-I-S? Yes. Curriculum management. And in those two, there's a section of about, um, where they also have audited, um, the organization of the district and both times it's come up short from where they believe it should be. So I just really feel like, um, instead of it just being my opinion, that I have some fresh eyes in outside to kinda look at that and help us really get things in alignment so that we're organized and we're running the system. Because to me, one of the most important goals that I have is that I wanna make sure we have an efficient organization that is meeting the needs of our employees along with our students and parents. I wanna make sure that our employees are taken care of, have the best insurance that they can have, that they're paid, paid on time, that there's some specific things, that we're safe. Today when I met with Mr. Fringer, I said, I want to know how safe we are. So if we would have any kind of cyber attack, that we are protected, that the records of our employees are protected. And so he was talking about some of the steps that he's taken to ensure that. That's some of the areas in the organization that we owe it to, the employees that work for us and also our students, student records, and our parents. So we're gonna dig into that. So number two is student achievement. You've heard a lot about that tonight. And as we dig into the student achievement and we look at that, um, we have about three of our strategic goals that fall in this, uh, area and this category. And as I look at this, we know we wanna improve our proficiency rates. And I've done a lot of, I've had a lot of conversation with Dr. Borthman and, uh, his team around our proficiency rates. And as I followed your data, it looks like we've kinda plateaued. So I use the weight analysis or, and kinda looking at it, when you're on a diet, you get to a certain spot and you plateau and you've gotta do something different. And so we're at that plateau. We are hanging around sixty, sixty-two percent and we really wanna push. It's not been a common practice for y'all to put in, uh, goals in which you said, moving four percent, moving four percent. By 2020, where can we get? How close to eighty percent can we get? And so that's something that we're gonna push and begin to grow our administrators in. I was speaking to one tonight at the table and I said to him, you are, uh, a priority school, correct? And he said, yes. I said, what must you hit to get out of a priority, uh, classification and status, according to the state and the federal, uh, guidelines? And he looked at me and he said, he wasn't sure. He could not tell me the percent of students he needed to move and sustain to get out of that classification. Because what priority schools mean is that in the state of Iowa, you're in the lowest ten percent. And we have about four schools that sit in that classification that we're going to really support and move out of there. So, um, analyzing the data, I believe our, our principals are looking at their data and they're analyzing that and that you know the core instruction has been a focus of the teaching and learning department and they've done a really good job with that. They really have. The area that I'm gonna hit on is the district assessment. We don't have a way for me to give you a pulse at any time. And, um, so NWA, which, which really means a, um, Northwest, I'm gonna make sure I say it right, education association is an assessment that Dr. Borthman is going to look at this week and meet with them. And the NWA assessment is an assessment that is a K-12. It will assess our children not only in, uh, ELA, English Language Arts, but also math and science. So we know, an area that is concerned to me is our math scores. So we need a place in which we can monitor our students' growth in comparison to students across the nation and that we can do that three times a year. So we'll get a benchmark in the fall, then we'll get a mid-year to see. And the great part about NWA is it sets goals for students. So we not only as a district can look at our district by grade level, we can now look at our district by school, we can look at our district by school, by grade level, we can look at our district by school, by grade level, and by student. And this student, once we start in pre-K or kindergarten, we can chart and watch that student's growth all the way up. So we're looking at maybe starting a pilot program in the, uh, spring with a couple of schools and a couple of grade levels. When I rolled this out in Kansas City, uh, we did a criterion reference assessment, the state did. Here you do a norm reference. We, uh, did not have a way to measure growth of our students. And I knew that we had such an issue with how our students were between the bands. I needed to measure, was I moving them towards the next band to get them over the hump? And how fast was the growth occurring in the school year? NWA will provide us that area to show us the growth that our students are making. It also provides us with a Lexile score, which is what the score that you get out of an SRI. And so we'll be able to use that assessment to see and then it automatically for teachers places them in groups. So the teacher then knows exactly what students know in each one of the groups and it gives them what I call a continuum of learning. Here's what the student knows, here's what the student should know, and then they put a section in the middle that says, here's what the students must learn to get to what they should know. And so it kinda gives a roadmap for that teacher to know, this kid has mastered all of these skills. They're in the gray right here and if they don't master these, they won't get to here. Then it will also put you in, uh, a section that shows you at the rapid growth, where they are in comparison to where students at the same grade level and the growth that they're making. So we'll do a comparison to us in comparison to the others. There's, uh, many of your, um, districts here in Iowa are starting to look at NWA. In fact, um, I pull on West Des Moines a lot and, uh, Lisa is also implementing, uh, NWA. And it's just a really good tool that will allow our teachers to have, because when I hear we only have SRI, which is comprehension, and FAST at the early learning, we are not measuring growth or no growth of our students until they get to the end and then they take Iowa assessment, which really isn't aligned to what they've been learning and teaching all year. The other good part about NWA is it is aligned to the common core, which is strongly aligned to the Iowa core. So I think there's some good alignment there. And our district really needs to have that, because you should be able to hear where our students are, how much growth they've made in this year, and we can look at that. It also gives the teachers a screener. So the screener that we're getting with the FAST, we will use that screener for the baseline and then there's also a different screener that they can take throughout the year as a progress monitoring tool. And so I think it's a, an added piece that will allow us to get off of that plateau and begin to start that climb again and get us towards that eighty percent to a hundred percent.
Dr. Marilla?
So the...
Do you want questions during this or...
I can. I, yeah, I, we talked about putting in question slides behind them and I didn't know if that would take you all too long or you thought it would drag out and you, but I, we could stop after some critical pieces like achievement if you'd like.
Like, I have a question on this that, um, do we feel, um, we've looked at this kind of on gauging where students are versus assessments versus, um, the, the assessments we give in class, the tests and quizzes and things. Do we still feel that those quizzes and tests don't match up to state assessments? Where we can't accurately know whether a student is doing...
So let me, let me explain it this way.
Yeah.
Um, the questions at the end of a chapter or questions or a unit test that a teacher may make up and there, is there a pool, a bank of questions teachers can pull from, good, that they can pull out of? That tells you if the students mastered those standards or not. If those standards are tested at the end of the year, if they mastered or not, then you're great, you know. But still, um, there is not a way to track unless a teacher creates their own Excel file. They have to start checking those off. An NWEA assessment is not going to measure, did they take that assessment or that, did they master the unit that was just taught in that subject area? It's saying, this is what students should learn in fourth grade. And here's where your students are in comparison to other students. And here's what they know, what they don't know, and here's what they should know. And then it tracks the growth that we're making and the progress according to the standards that are set.
So does it have like a, a timeline of instruction of those standards along that period or...
A course of a year. It is a grade level, so it's a grade, a grade span test.
So and is it the same questions at the beginning of the year as it is at the end of the year? And, and conceptually, like, uh, where I would just track a child's improvement over time? Or does it get harder as the year goes on based on what they should have learned?
It does get harder, yes.
So then will we, we align our curriculum to it? To match point in time kinda where it should be? Okay.
That's not how it works, at least that's not what we did. It... That's correct.
So it should be...
That's great.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And it gives a more realistic evaluation of where we are.
Okay.
Yes. And it's measuring more than just fluency or more than just comprehension.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And I love that we have a math and a science piece, because math is really where I'm concerned. So, of course, we're gonna guarantee and continue the work around graduates being future-ready. And then lastly is expand early childhood learning opportunities. You know that last year, Dr. Buckner really worked with Head Start to pull those in and get that good relationship. We know this is also one of the goals of Iowa West and we're going to continue to work with them and, um, expand early childhood learning opportunities. We're not sure exactly where that's going. We've done some work around what would an early childhood center look like? How could we expand the sheet, uh, the seats that we have? We also know that that is not funded except for half-day, so by the state. So it is something that we would have to look at budgets, look at partnerships, look for scholarships for students to attend the early learning opportunities. Um, we're also looking at maybe, um, introducing some different styles. Um, and we had a very successful Montessori, early learning, uh, opportunities in, in my prior district. Um, it's something that, uh, the teaching and learning department is really interested in, seeing if we could look into bringing a model as such into the district or creating, you know, certain classrooms and so many. Uh, so we're really still digging into what does teaching and learning, uh, how that would look around early childhood and how we would expand it. But I can tell you it's on the radar screen. I believe you'll have a presentation probably after the first of the year of what that will look like as we dig into that deeper. Okay? I'll go into goal three. So goal three is a new concept. It is something that, uh, we have had a lot of conversation around. In my prior district, uh, early college academy was something that became very, very successful for us. Early college academy is a pathway for students to earn both a high school diploma and an associate's degree, uh, at the time that they graduate from high school. Uh, what that looks like is you have students, uh, that really, um, are ready for something more than just high school. Uh, how we set up the structure and the format, and Dr. Borthman has really began to dig into this and champion this for me, is we, um, partnered with our local community college, which would be Iowa Western. We have a meeting this week with, uh, Dr. Kenny. And we will begin to advertise and recruit and talk with students that would like more than just a high school experience. Uh, we began, um, in my prior district in January with a cohort of twelve students. It's about what we would like to try here. Uh, we will then do a crosswalk of what is required in their junior and senior year to graduate from high school and then lay over what are the college courses that they would take that would meet that same criteria and then allow students to begin that journey of earning that AA or associates while they continue to earn those high school credits. Students would stay full-time on the campus, they would go there, they would take all of their coursework on campus. They would not come back to the high school except to participate in extra or co-curricular activities. It, uh, becomes something that is, uh, just unbelievable, uh, experiences for the students. Uh, we had our students in, um, on the Penn Valley campus and they became part of the leadership for the dean. They started working on campus and the bookstore and some other areas. Uh, just really became part of that college culture. Uh, a lot of them were first-generation college-goers. Uh, they were, we will have a set criteria by which students will have to meet. They'll have to do an essay, they'll have to go through an interview, their parents will be a part of that interview session. Um, and we will dig in and create an early college academy that will be successful and provide a lot of support for students, because when they first get on to a college campus, some of them, it will be a, a different experience. But we found, um, we began with twelve and before I left, we were at a hundred and one students on the campus. So we always have two cohorts. You have a junior and a senior cohort. And so you, our goal someday here would be to have a hundred. We can begin with twelve, move our way up to twenty-eight, thirty. And, uh, what it is really is, um, we will work through counselors to recruit those students they think would be great fits. We'll advertise for all students to apply. But what we found and, um, we always had an end-of-the-year celebration where our students coming in that were going to graduate, uh, come into the boardroom. And many of them would tell the story of, I liked school, I didn't love high school, but man, I loved being on that college campus. It saved me, it kept me from being a, a SO SO student to look at me, I'm graduating with an AA. Most of our students all went on to a four-year institute, uh, except for we lost a few to the military. And then, um, we had one that, uh, decided to, uh, take a different route. For, for the most part, we were very, very successful. The great part that we have here is the state reimburses for college credit. So very, it was very reasonable. Back in, uh, Missouri, the state did not. So I was out shaking bushes for about three hundred thousand every semester to put the students through, uh, our early college academy, because we did it without cost. And that's how we'd like to do it here. So we'll look for a partnership.
So do we have...
Go ahead.
No, I would like to hear yours.
Is it a surprise that I have questions?
No.
So, students, the, the cohort would begin when they're juniors?
Yes, sir.
And they'd be able to complete sixty-four credit hours in two years?
Yes, sir. We will look for, um, um, Dr. Borthman thinks they can do fifteen credits. In Missouri, we did twelve and the students did summer.
Oh, okay.
Our students also went through the summer. They started, uh, the summer before the junior year started. They had to take some, especially the one about transitioning to being on the college and, you know, that type of thing, kind of like a freshman intro class. Um, and then, um, they also then took, uh, the summer between the two. And then if we had to, we would do a post-summer with some. But for the most part, they did have to go through the summer. Now, Dr. Borthman believes that he's got this figured out and we might be able to do it without summer. And I think it'd be great if we could. But the students are, our instructor worked year-round. She was a former counselor, uh, loved kids, recruited kids, helped them. Every child had to, we had a wall that had everyone's name up and they all had to apply to ten colleges. And when the scholarship offers came back from their applications, we started the wall of the, uh, scholarships and the acceptance. And it was just powerful when you walk in. And the juniors sitting in there seeing the seniors have their pick of where to go, it was just amazing. It was, it was just amazing. And the, the dean of the college just started taking in our kids and, and just welcoming them and they just, they just really become infused. Now, the reason I put a staff member on the campus is because those students are still ours. And did we have to sometimes shoo away some older children that were maybe, um, you know, noticing some of our young females? Yeah. But we took care of that and we made sure that, uh, the boundaries were there. Um, we also did a really good job of blending our kids, so not keeping them all in one cohort and putting them in the English lit and, and, uh, college algebra. But we sprinkled them, so they became just like college students. I didn't want them to be college students that were stuck inside. Um, so we did a lot of, uh, pieces like that. And then we did a lot of work with them around being on college, uh, the college campus. And, and Paula did a lot because she was a counselor, so she really counseled them through. So Mary, so we're looking for the right fit, uh, but who would be, uh, a really good, uh, staff member to be on the campus? And what they did was they gave us one room to begin with. And as I kept growing, they gave me a room and they gave me a room, because it became their home room. So they came back to where the, and so they had to check in when they arrived on campus, they had to check out when they were leaving, and then when they got home, they text. Uh, so we did some of those, because we did not provide transportation for the students. They got their own ra, their own ride there and, and home. And in our area, our students were riding public buses.
How do you identify the, these students that, you know, I don't, I don't know how, I, I don't know who these students are, but how, how do you identify them?
Right, most people would think that they're tag students.
Right.
But not always, no. We'll set a criteria that will start first, you kind of have to set a criteria that you set. So we'll look at GPAs, we'll look at interest, we'll look at, um, um, we'll have referrals. So maybe some counselors know of students that would be great fits. We'll also have the tag... We'll also have the tag teachers do some referrals and look at that. And then the students have to complete an application. They'll also have to do an essay as to why. We'll read that and approve or disapprove. So, everyone that applies doesn't get in. They've got to go through. And then there'll be conditions that students must meet to stay on the campus and to go through the program. We de-admitted some kids because we knew they weren't, they weren't... And the other piece was, I was standing before a board showing how I was spending this money. So, students had to pass the class. If they didn't pass classes, I had to de-admit them. So, that was some of the key pieces I won't have to worry about here because I'm not out asking for the funds. Because we believe we can cover this with reimbursement from the state. We'll have a little bit of cost, but nothing like what we experienced there.
Will these be, is there kind of a set curriculum that these kids will follow? Or do they have kind of customized, or not curriculum, but courses of study?
They'll take, we will map out, which bothered some of the funders because they do have to still take fine and practical art classes. So, they'll take PE on the college campus. Some took dance, you know, art, those type of areas that meet. They will take the courses required to achieve the AA. There will be no amendments. There will be no concessions given. They must meet that criteria to get that AA. Okay? Great. So, goal number four. This is one that's kind of near and dear to my heart. And that's expanding our CTE and Technical Education Program. I'll attend this Thursday, my first state meeting on CTE because I know that they made some changes, so I'm trying to figure that out. But it's my goal to expand our half-day program. It's my goal to expand the number of course offerings that we have. This is another area that we keep talking about, post-secondary attainment for all students. That's what your strategic plan talks about. Early college provides that, and so does the CTE goal. This provides that because it provides opportunities for students that want more than just high school classes or AP courses. They'd like to do something different. The CTE will provide that because what we want to do is create pathways that allow them... We want to make sure, again, the target will be 11th and 12th grade. We'll do exploratory classes kind of before they get to that area. We'll look at what we can offer on a will maybe in the middle school. And then what we can offer in the high schools and their ninth and 10th grade programs. We want to align again with Iowa Western Community College and the programs that they have. We want to meet the current workforce needs. We want to increase the ability for our students to job shadow, do interns and apprenticeships, and pre-apprentice for those that would be in high school. And then, successful completion of this allows our students to be eligible for the articulation that we would have with Iowa Western. I know that there's also a big push around Avenue Scholars and the work that they do over in Omaha with Metro. But we will really work closely with Iowa Western before we look to move over into the Omaha Community College. But we want to make sure that they have that ability also to have that dual credit and have access to employment placement services. We have some real interest in our community around providing opportunities for our students that don't want to go to a four-year institute. How can we get them into a career or technical program that would allow them to go after their passion, what they enjoy doing, what they like to be involved in as they move into employment? This right here and figuring out what those are looking like. We are making contact to see what would be future jobs around Council Bluffs. I'd like to see the data and what that looks like. I'd also like to see how we can align these programs to ensure that there is an articulation so that when they leave ours... Like, we had several community colleges in our area. So, our culinary arts program was with Johnson County Community College because it has a fabulous program. So, if they were completers for us, they earn college credits. Not a lot, but three or four credits. And then they could go right into the Johnson County Community College and move right into their program. That's the same kind of backward design I'd like to do for our CTE program as we expand that. Another goal for mine would be to have a bigger CTE building than what we have at Tucker. Tucker has a couple of programs that have good space and really up-to-date program. Welding B&amp;One, automotive, the Bays and that are pretty nice. And we have one really great lab. And that's the students that we can't say enough great things about that does the football fields and all of the promos that go up on the board. Just some fabulous work. But then if I took you into some of the other programs, they don't meet standard. And so, we want to make sure that we expand this. Now, we don't know if expanding means we move them to a different building, if we build what that looks like. But we're digging into that, looking for resources. I'm meeting with some different community members and talking with them. And we're also hoping that we can get a great partnership with our Community Education Foundation to help us work through this process and really look at how we can expand our career in technical education. Any questions before I move on? Great. Goal five. This is an area that we are still working through to understand exactly what that means. When I ask about defining mental health indicators, I can hear a lot of different definitions. It is something that we want to make sure that we really dig into and look at. In our strategic plan, it not only mentions mental health. It talks about bullying. It talks about social and emotional as part of that goal. We're focusing, and what we heard from the community was mental health issues. But we are going to continue to focus on the strategic plan. So, we have a lot of good work that's going on that Mr. Hamilton is working on and working with his lead teams to help us develop that. As I talked to principals tonight and asked some questions about, how were things going in their building? And how are teachers really digging into what is mental health versus what is... When you talk bullying, that's the OBEAS program that we're really trying to work on there and what that sounds and breathes and looks like. And then you talk about the social and emotional. And Dr. Vorthman is going to really address that for you in the academic plan. And when I talk about the academic plan, I really feel like besides having the goals of my post-100 days, but we need an academic plan that really holds us accountable to moving students and moving areas and really get into the teaching and learning and meeting goals. So, the social and emotional, Dr. Vorthman really believes goes hand-in-hand with our academic achievement. So, we've kind of pulled it out and decided that we really need to focus on mental health and what does that look like? The students don't have an IEP with this. They don't have extra services. We're not talking about somebody bullying. And so, mental health is how do we handle students that are not successful in the regular classroom, but they don't have an IEP? And it's not just something that we can have a class meeting and discuss and work together. This is really, truly something traumatic, some trauma. Some things have happened in the student's life. Right now, what I'm sensing and seeing as I move through the buildings, we don't have a clear process of how to remove students and how do we re-enter students to be successful. So, this is something that we have to develop. Now, I saw a really great model at Rue with the principal there. And as we were coming down the hallway, I saw the paper on the floor. I saw the students fist-clutched, and I saw them standing outside, and they were very stiff. And I thought, okay, well, how will she handle this when she gets her... And she walks up, she calls his name, and she says, "You're not ready to go back into class." And he's still just staring at her. And she says, "It's okay if you're not ready." And he, and so then the Sam comes by and says, "Are you not ready? Would you like to go to the sensory room? Would you like to come down and write about your feelings? Would you like to just come and play with some Play-Doh? Would you just like to be alone?" And finally, he spoke and he said, "I'm not ready." And this would have been about a third grader. So, she said, "You know what? I'll pick up your paper and let's go." In the old days, when I was a teacher, it would have been we were allowing kids to decide what they're going to do. But when I turned to the principal and I said, "Tell me what you took away from what just happened." And she goes, "I'm finding avenues to protect that instructional time for the other 23 sitting in there so that one doesn't destroy it until I can find out how to help the one..." And I didn't know, but this was a child from Children's Square. And she said, "He's come. He's angry. We think there's been a lot of trauma. We don't know exactly what's going on. We're not getting a lot of information. He hasn't been here that long, but some way I have to protect the instructional environment." So, see, they were looking for a way for him to be successful, and they knew he wasn't ready. So, do we push him back in because he's supposed to be in there? Not at the expense of other children. We need to help him first. And then, we get him back into the education flow. So, these are some of the areas that we're really working on and trying to create that criteria and working through there. And then we also need to expand our community partners. Because one thing that we are finding out quickly in the education world, we don't know, we were not trained as principals or teachers to handle this. And so, we are struggling, and we've got to expand our partnership, and we've got to continue to provide professional development. The great thing is, you have a professional development department and a Teaching and Learning Department that are providing courses for teachers to take and for administrators to take. I saw them in the summer. I'm already seeing them in the fall catalog that teachers are signing up for. So, that's great. The place we've got to go to is, what are we going to say is Council Bluffs? And then how do we get training? Because right now, it's training. If I'm interested, I go. So, how do we get that across? So, that's that action steps that we've got to figure out. And how urgent, what's in year one, what's in year two, and what's in year three?
Do we have, I know we have the, I believe it's called advisory at the high school level, where they, essentially each instructor, each employee there kind of has 15 to 20 kids or something that they are supposed to be touching, reaching out to. Are we providing supports for those folks to have the skills necessary to be effective at that at this point?
Well, what you're seeing, you have advising at the high school. But at the middle, elementary and middle school, what I'm seeing is the OBEAS class meetings is what they're using kind of as their advising in the elementaries. And a lot of buildings now, every classroom meeting has two adults. So, you have two in the building that are taking ownership for those kids and making meaningful relationship. One of our presenters this summer was doing two-by-ten. And that instructional strategy talks about, you take two minutes with one student every day for 10 days, and you build a relationship and get to know them. And you don't talk about school. You don't talk about grades. You don't talk about behavior. You learn who they are and build a relationship to change that. It shows them somebody cares. It gives them someone that has a relationship with. And that's some things that they're doing. But again, what I'm seeing, Mr. Arthur, is that it's here and here and here. And there's got to be autonomy where building principals can say, "This best fits my building. PBIS fits my building." OBEAS doing it in the morning, two teachers touching, fits my building. So, we've got to allow principals to crack. We've just got to create a monitoring system to see how it's going and then do a program evaluation. Because when that was asked, that was one of the things I asked Dr. Vorthman, is what is on the cycle to be evaluated this year? What programs are we evaluating that we can share at the end of the year? What worked and what didn't work?
I guess my question here is, has the time come where we need to redefine who qualifies to have an individual education plan? Maybe not call it an IEP, but call it a personal education plan, personal learning...
Plan.
Plan, personal learning blueprint. Has that time come that we need to address the needs of all students to have an individual plan that they can take ownership with?
I can tell you that NWA will do that without the social, emotional, mental, or behavior. NWA will give you a individualized, we call it a personal learning plan for every student. Because every student gets where they stopped, and every year, they continue. That bar graph continues to move for them. When they used to take their assessments, we automatically gave their goals and would put sticky notes on their laptops so the students knew what goal they were heading towards. They owned their goals. They set their goals of where they thought they could increase to. And of course, in K1 and 2, not so much. But when you get to 3, 4, and 5, and they start understanding that, and then you get to middle schools, those kids are carrying that. And they can see exactly where they are in ELA, math, and science. In the mental health and what OBEAS does to what we would do with mental health and the social and emotional, I'm not sure exactly what that screener does. But there is a screener that the district used last year that they have for a baseline. And so, that's something that we can build upon. But we don't have one software that puts it all together.
So, will the NWEA and these efforts, will that improve our parent-teacher conferences?
Yes.
I mean...
They have, and the parents will get a report on their students. And the parents then can also see the growth that's made or the lack thereof. They can follow the student, and they can see them from year to year. And it really will start. The positive and the powerful piece is, as a district now, the cohorts that we follow will be the students that took the assessment in the fall prior year to student that took the assessment this year. So, we will have to pull out some that transfer in or transfer out. But you'll be able to follow your cohorts and be able to look at those data of the cohorts.
And then will that then correlate with or work in concert with other FAST screening, SRI, things like that, or does that totally replace those?
It would replace. There'd be no reason to double. And the one piece is, the FAST is something that the state requires. But what we could do also, I wouldn't say that we don't... I would say what I did in my prior state was, we applied to the state for a waiver. If we had this assessment that provided the same thing, could we use it? If not, the monitoring tool is a very short term, correct? So, they could, because NWA has only given three periods, three different times. The one thing you don't want people to think is we're over-assessing children. But the SRI, we definitely would not continue to give because there is an SRI Alexxow score in NWA.
Inside there, okay.
I just kind of wanted to piggyback on your comment, Mr. Cozire. I think you and I had the same group of building principals. And I had the opportunity to visit with one of them. And they are implementing individual blueprint plans with students and allowing them to create those plans themselves. And it seems to be a positive thing that they're doing.
That's a middle school? Was that Wilson?
They're all talking.
Oh.
Kern.
Kern?
Kern.
I didn't have Kern. I think it was a high school.
A different, well, TJ, they were doing it at TJ.
Correct. Yeah, it was a high school.
Yeah. And it is something that...
In their freshman year.
Right.
Yeah.
And the one piece that I have found in my listening and learning is that we have a lot of schools doing a lot of different things, which I still think is okay to allow the autonomy as long as we can continue to see the alignment. So, some way at the district level, we got to pull in the alignment to strategically look at it. And then, things that are really making a difference, we need to make sure we showcase that so other principals can see it. So, that's really great. So, my last goal is to develop and implement a marketing plan. And you might say, "Why?" And I can tell you, because it's driving me nuts, the transfer outs. So, this year, we had 34, I think is what they told me, 34 less transfer outs. And they thought that was something to celebrate. But if I still took 700 children and took them times $6,665, which is what we would receive for them, we have lost $4.6 million because of transfer outs. And so, the one thing that I believe is, again, just like with mental health and social and emotional problems that students have, our principals are not trained to be, to market their schools. They are not trained, there's not a class that says, "When you become a principal and administrative certification, and you're going to market your schools." You've got to recruit kids. You've got to hold on to kids, da-da-da-da. And as I'm going through building by building the data, and I see 20 kids leave Bloomer, 5th grade, so he's down 20. I'm saying, "Where did the 20 go and why?" As I look through some of the schools and go grade level by grade level, where they were in enrollment last year to where they are, and then follow the cohort, because you know it's not apples to apples unless I bring the cohort up. Then I got apples to apples, right? So, four to five. You have to start looking at, how do we help principals with that? And how do we market our schools? Because it is a perception, I think, we deal with. Most of our, most of our transfer outs, of course, is close to the line. We lose 500-plus kids to Lewis Central every year. The Kern and AL lose the largest amount. But if you would lay down program to program, you would see that we have, we offer more. If you would lay down academic achievement, you would see we match or exceed in some areas from Lewis Central. So, how do we combat that? We could turn a blind's eye and say, "It is what it is. It's good enough. We only lose 700. We're down 34. Let's celebrate," right? Let's celebrate, right? And I say, that's not good enough. We can't say something is just good enough. We've got to make a run at it. We've got to make sure that we let people know of the good work that's going on. You saw the principals tonight. There's not one principal that doesn't love their building and doesn't want the best for their building. I've been in a lot of classrooms, a lot. And when I don't get into all of them, they will beat me up on Twitter. I mean, I was through AL and I got tweets out saying, I saw her through the window, but she didn't come in. She was in my room, but she only stayed four, four minutes and something seconds. So they're timing and they're watching. They want me in every room. And I'll get there eventually. But I can tell you, in every room I go in, you have teachers that want to teach. You have teachers that care about kids. And the areas where we have to improve, we have targeted already and we're making those improvements as I go through the classrooms. So, one thing that we've got to do is, we've got to find a way to market our district. We've got to fa, find a way to show them that this is a good district. You shouldn't want to choose another area to go to. And here are some of the things that we offer. We've got to make that public. And the other piece that I'm really pushing is, we've got to make more rigorous, relevant curriculums that fit where the students are at. And what I mean by that is, I always ask principals, what do you do for your high achieving students? We know everybody gets the core. We know we automatically have everything in place to implement, to supplement, to to assist and bring up those students that are following behind or coming in not on grade level. But tell me what you do for high achievers. Tell me what you do for the high flyers that are already in, and please don't say tag. I have a tag teacher. That's not okay. That's a pullout or a push-in that happens once or twice a week. So tell me what you're doing. And I'm beginning to shift their thinking because I want them to take students that are in first grade or second grade that should be in fourth grade math and send them to fourth grade math. I want to make sure that when we get students to the middle school, that we're pushing another twenty-five percent up to get into the higher level and we're not just relying on one test for one moment in time that keeps children in certain classrooms. And we've got to begin to think outside the box. That's what parents are looking for. Parents are looking for good after-school, extra and co-curricular activities, but mostly they're looking for, how are you pushing my child and how are you helping my child become a high achiever and ready for that post-secondary experience? And that's where we want to be. We want to make sure we meet the needs of all children, not just the middle of the road, not just focused on those that we need to supplement and say, those that are up here, we'll give them extra work. I want it to be relevant. I want it to be pushed. That really begins to take hold in a community that we're doing some things that are really outstanding. And so that's some of the areas that we want to focus on. So the marketing plan, we have done an RFP. We received about six or five, six proposals. We have it narrowed down to two. We're bringing them in to do a presentation to us. Again, I want a firm to partner with us, not to come in and say, what do you need? What do you need? I need them to think for us and bring it in and allow us to pick. And then allow us to really create a plan that goes and says, there's no other reason for you to choose another district than Council Bluffs Community School District. That's something that we really, it is known in the state that we're a strong district. They know that. But I also want to tell you and be realistic, you're a middle of the road district. You're in the middle of the pack. We got to get out of the middle of the pack. And we got to get up in the top. You know, sometimes we say, top twenty by twenty twenty. I mean, you want to be there. That's, that's where Dr. Vorthman is taking, as we worked on the academic plan and he set those goals, I want to be out of the middle of the pack and I want to be up at the top as we continue to push and strive. Doesn't mean it happens all at once. We all know that. We know that you've got to work and build your steps and build those building blocks to get there. But in three years, we should be out of the middle of the pla, pack and be moving. The second thing that I've talked about a lot is the district website. It has to be refreshed. It's old. So we've got it, we've got to get that and we're going to. And then we've got to leverage social media to engage current and future families. I'm never going, I just want to be honest with you, we're not going to go get a lot of high school kids to come back. They're already embedded in that community and with their class as they're moving towards graduation. But we've got a group of families future, and we know millennials love social media. And we've got to leverage that. I mean, if you don't know that, look at ESPN and what they're going through. They have seen a shift from the people that used to watch them to now the millennials are walking around looking at it on social media and stuff and not even watching. So ESPN is trying to recreate themselves. They don't know what to do. They let go of all of their key staff members and recreating. That's the same thing we've got to do here. We've got to leverage, we got to make sure that when they are kindergartners, we hook them into Council Bluffs and we keep them. And we got to follow them and we got to make sure. That's why it's important to me, on the nights that we have the student achievement and we celebrate students, when I'm, I want to meet parents because I want to thank them for letting us educate them. We, we have to understand that parents will vote with their feet. They will leave us. And every time they leave us, they leave taking the funding that we would receive to do programs in our district with them. So we need to make sure that we let parents know, we appreciate them. We appreciate them and we thank them for letting us educate their children. And I'm thankful that they're here. And that's what we celebrate. So that's kind of around the marketing plan and what we want to do. So, next steps, we'll push the plan out. We'll develop the work groups. We'll begin to lay out year one, year two, year three, and get our action steps in place. And then we will continue to update the board on the, and in the community on the shared prog, progress. One of the things that I thought about that we're waiting to see with the marketing firm, if it would take hold or make a difference is, maybe we get out on, once every three months, out into the community and share the plan and do like minutes with Morello or something like that. And we just have a coffee time and just let community ask questions and talk about the updates that we're having. And see how that goes and see how they feel about that and spending more time with the staff and talking with them. So that's kind of the post one hundred day plan. I'm sure I've overwhelmed you and talked way too much, but any questions, additional questions?
I, I guess I just want to clarify that you're not, you're not saying you're going to adopt the ESPN model of getting rid of all of our key personnel.
Not at all.
I just want to clarify that.
No, no.
Okay.
No. I'm talking about them leveraging, how do they use social media for the young people? Because Fox Sports is, is taking it. It's taken it right out from underneath them. And they just learned how to leverage some things. And we got to leverage that social media for our families and our young families coming up.
I have a question then on the hundred day plan and the strategic plan and the, the school individual improvement plans and our, I know there's another plan or two we have. How will these all work together in concert? Is this, is this a focus on college and career readiness from the strategic plan or a focus?
Yes.
Or the next step of the marketing plan from that or?
Yeah, as you go through, like, goal number two, it will hit one point one, which talks about instructional practices. It talks about strengthening our core instruction. Five point three talks about post-secondary attainment, which we know that's going to be where we are with our early college academy, our CTE, and our advanced student placement. And then another piece that we are going to use with the high quality is, we talk a lot about seven point four, which is students connecting through technology and that higher level. So we'll begin to align these goals because as we have to report out on the eight strategic plan, strategic goals that we picked for this year, how is this supporting the strategic plan? And then, as you notice, for a lot of these, this will be in the comprehensive school improvement plan. These areas you will find here. This will also be in the school improvement plans. But the early college academy and the CTE, it will also be in our comprehensive, but it will not necessarily, because this will be a district, be aligned to a school improvement plan. But remember, your strategic plan drives the district right now. It still has two years. So we will align within the eight. Mental health, that area that we were working there, that is five point three. And that is develop a culture at all areas, I'm sorry, six point two and six point five. And that really talks about the interventions, behavior, and mental health. And then it talks about substance abuse, mental health, and behavioral needs. So we have two areas right there. And the reason we pulled this out is, we felt like OVAES was really assisting us in behavior and bullying. And then we felt like the social and emotional that you'll hear at the next workshop, where you guys will be able to dig into that, we'll address that. The mental health seemed to be the challenge and what we're hearing in almost every one of our listening and learning meetings, when we set up the charts and they did the opportunity and then challenges, mental health and and classroom discipline and dealing with students that was disrupting seemed to just be blaring. How do you, how are we going to fix that? How are we going to do that? So that's kind of why we pulled that piece out.
Okay. Other questions from the board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we come to the resolution portion of the meeting. We have a bond refinancing on here and several resolutions tied to that. Is there a motion? The resolutions on paper, are we?
Yes, for the two thousand ten A bond refinancing.
The, the attorneys wanted us to go through each one of these individually.
Separately?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I need a resolution appointing a trustee?
I move to approve resolutions for appointing trustee.
Do we need to read the exact verbiage? Are we good?
If I can find it.
You should have a page in front of you that might, you might be able to locate that.
It's kind of different with the board docs there.
It looks a little different, doesn't it? The board appointing Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa to serve as trustee, approving the trust indenture and authorizing the execution of same as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
That's on the, just as a side note, that's on the recommended action portion of the board docs at the top. When you click on that action resolution, it has a recommended action at the top, so.
It goes a note type or whatever.
Correct. Dean, please call the roll.
Do you want to, do you want to open up online voting to test one or do you want to just?
You know what? Why not do online voting, but we'll also do a voice vote.
You've got a question.
I just opened it up.
Yeah, what's that, do you have a question?
We got a question regarding where, where we would locate that on the, so, right, I have, I've got it pulled up.
So it's in all capital letters under subject access type recommendation.
When you click on it, right here.
Okay, okay, okay. That's, that's the link then.
Yes.
Anything that would be in capitals, it would give us the.
Click the res and it's up there.
Okay.
Okay, so, Dean, also call the roll, just so we have a voice vote.
Okay, Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Dr. Agress?
Yes.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Cosaire?
Yes.
And Mr. Arthur.
Yes. And the motion is carried. I'm curious to see it pop up here.
It doesn't.
It will in about three, two, two, four, six. You learn. Oh, I have to save it. There we go.
Operator error.
There we go, it's there.
There we go. Okay, for you watching at home, have fun.
Six oh.
Okay, so, and we, that motion is approved, appoint trustee. Now we have a motion to authorizing tax exemption certificate.
So we would do it.
If you click on the resolution, it pops up.
Be resolved, the board authorize the form of tax exemption certificate be placed on file and approved. I move, so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I think I'm getting this.
Second.
Second from Mr. LaFurla. Is there any discussion on this matter? If not, Dean, please call the roll.
I'll say, I opened up online voting again. Dr. Agress?
Yeah, it says Y E A.
Yay, okay, Mr. LaFurla?
Yay.
Mr. Minshaw?
Yes.
Mr. McGlade?
Yes.
Mr. Cosaire?
Yay.
Mr. Arthur?
Aye. Yay, kind of flipped around. And the motion is carried. I'm pretty sure, although I'm looking at the top of it. Oh, yeah, I made it. Sorry, this is a new toy.
We.
And now we have a resolution for the authorization of the terms of issuance and securing payment of nine million, five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of bond proceeds. Is there a motion?
Come on, go for it.
Motion by John Minshaw.
I move, be resolved, the board authorize and provide the, provide for the terms of